Everybody's evening.
Good to see you everybody.
We'd like to welcome you to the regular meeting of the living town council for the month of May. At this time, if we can stand for our invocation of Cleveland. Do our invocation will be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we bow before you so thankful and grateful, God, for the time to be here. Health and strength to do so, the very fact, Lord, that we have the freedoms in this country to come together. Thankful for this governing body and the freedom that we have to have a voice in it. Just ask you, God, for wisdom and discernment and guidance, Lord, and everything that is decided and said and done here this evening. And I pray, most important, if there be one gathered here, Lord, that is never accepted, free gift for salvation through Jesus Christ, God, I pray that they would ultimately realize that need and call upon your name before it be eternally too late. Again, Lord, thank you for all that you do and all that you are. In Jesus' name we do pray.
We just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Appreciate it. Excuse me. We're now to editing for business on the agenda. I have about three or four things I need to add. I'll just make, well, we can make a note. Before we leave tonight, remember if someone will be adjourned, we need to adjourn to reconvene on Monday night of twenty-second at five-thirty. That's to conduct public hearing for twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So, just as long as someone will remember when we leave, like, to adjourn to reconvene, please. Need to add under old business Cedar Fest. Under new business, just some information I need to share with council from Soil Conservation Group at the Government Center regarding, not the request that they made regarding a trail at the Government Center property. And Brad, I'm not sure if you know, I'm assuming you know about this, but John Michael had called me about a state or federal application for a, one of those brick buildings where you do training.
Burnt.
A burn building. And apparently, he's been to the IDA that they're looking for a piece of property to do that. I was gonna re, I'm just gonna recommend, maybe we invite John Michael to the June meeting to talk about that, to see what, how much it is, where we are, that, you know, that grant. Every time I hear a grant, it usually means a match somewhere. So, I don't know if we know if there is a match with this grant, if it's a hundred percent. So, let me look on that, okay? All right, then I'll need to add, I wanna use some info from Russell County Tourism Director regarding the food truck park at the Russell place. Townwide yard sale is Saturday, and there will be, right now, there's already forty-eight spots secured at Living Middle, at the Living Middle School campus and then private residence at Townwide, so there'll be a lot of us folks in the past who've been in front of their businesses and, I'm here, maybe having one of my house too, I'm kinda hearing rumbles about that. Don't know if that's for sure. So, is there anything else you all need, that we need to add to the agenda? It's not all here.
You did a good job at that.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the agendas amended?
I'll make that motion.
Through second.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Favors same side. We're now down to editing and improvements from the April sixth call meetings and the April tenth regular council meeting. Hope everyone had a chance to review those. Have a motion to approve the minutes. Some note? Through second.
I'll second, Mayor.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion to say aye?
Aye.
Foes? Same side. Next time on the agenda is to approve the council's payment on the bills. Mr. Short, are there any additions other than what was handed up in our seat, Steven?
No, sir, I'm on by section B.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all it says.
Mr. Geller? Sheriff Finance?
I don't have any additions, Mayor. I'll go ahead and move to approve the able accounts payable, both the preliminary and D.
And D, okay. Through second.
I'll say.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion to say aye?
Aye.
Foes? Same side. See, now you got a public question. Mr. Brown, would you, on this, you know, little meeting or something, we need to get to?
I came from one. I'm all yours.
You come right out of the, you sure?
I'm all yours. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Good to see you all tonight. I wanna give you an update on the theater park out here that's under construction. And back, way back when we finally got the design down the way we liked it, you all asked me to, we're managing that with town construction labor, which has been going very well. We've had a few hiccups, which you know about, having to change the long material, a lot of things like that. Everybody's been great. Rob and Elsie are real gems and assets to the town. We should be very thankful that you have those being their, your big buildings. As we've gone to the upper terrace, you all remember when we initially had that design, we had a metal structure that was gonna cover that upper terrace. And that was architecturally, structurally designed, and the initial bid came back very high, and so it was decided to scrap that. And what we would do is build, at some point in the future, we would build perhaps a timber picnic pavilion structure on top of that terrace to be a covering. Obviously, that terrace has to serve as a vest of fuel for the theater. Theater is very tight as you go in, so covering on that terrace is in good, good order. The problem is this, and I hate to bring a problem to you without a solution, but I do have three options tonight. The footings that Robbie Elsie are putting in right now have to make an allowance for some sort of structure on top of that terrace at some point in the future. The town may never put anything up there, and if that's the case, that's fine. But if you ever do decide to put something on top of that, just as a, as a design professional, I've got a great concern at this particular moment that we do not have the footing adequately designed for a timber structure that would go on top of that, of that piece. The way we left it the last time, as far as I can recall, was that the town would handle the construction of that timber structure. And so, in my notes on my plans, it basically says timber structure by town, and there's a call-out to the structural connection on the wall that says, provide structural connection to footing. And that, that's all it says. I am not legally trained or able to design that structural footing connection. So, what that does is it calls to the town. The town's gonna build the structure, the town should have the footing in place and the structural connection to that footing in place. And Robbie Elsie have been asking me, what is it, what is it, what is it? And I'm saying, guys, that's not my purview. So, today, they told me that they had seen something eleven blocks, wanted me to go look at it, so it's a deck connection with all the six-by-six posts on it. Looked at it, got the information, looked it up online, and unfortunately, the manufacturer has a big disclaimer that says, this is not intended for shear stresses at the top of a post. It's for compression stresses only. So, compression stresses, if you got a deck sitting on that, that's what it's designed for, is to hold a deck. If, if a timber structure goes on top of that terrace and you get wind, you're gonna have shear loads on that, and that footing is not designed to hold wind loads and shear loads on a timber structure. So, before we get in a real big mess, I wanted to come and talk to you and express my concern about that. I don't think it's fair to ask Robbie Elsie to design that. I don't think they should have to have that liability on them. And I certainly can't take it on myself because I'm not licensed to do those sorts of, of designs. So, that being the case, and I know there's a lot of stress and a lot of push to try to get the theater open and to get that part finally done, and I'm with you. But I don't want, I, I can't with a clear conscience let things go forward out there the way they are on that little piece of a project. And as little as it is, it's got great ramifications. Because God forbid something would happen to where we have a crowd beneath that, the structure, a thunderstorm blow up and the thing come down, and it just, we don't want that nightmare on anybody's hands. So, I think there's, there's three ways forward. Number one would be to, to stop the work until we can get the timber structure architecturally and structurally designed with a proper connection to the footing. That would be track number one. Track number two is to go away from a permanent timber structure and have a, a tent structure designed to where there are perhaps sleeves in the concrete, in the, the concrete floor to where a tent can be put up for an event and then taken down. And that would be pretty simple to do, you know, an hour up, an hour down at the very most. And you'd have shade out there, you'd have, have covering out there for events, but then when there's nothing going on, that can come down. And then, of course, the third option is just to remove a structure altogether, but I do know that that limits the functionality of the theater in having that outdoor gathering space that's covered. I think that has got my heart warmed to you tonight, so any questions and anything we can discuss, I'm, I'm here.
Go over the tent option one more time, please.
I think given, any structure we put up there, Mayor, it's gonna have to be a custom design structure. But the tent structure, we should be able to get a tent manufacturer, a custom design, a tent that can be put up and taken down with, they may be rounded, they may be square sockets in, in the concrete set around that terrace to where the poles can be put in, fastened in place, and the structure erected to where it can cover that, that terrace. I, I don't know right offhand where to go to get that, but I do know you can buy, get, get designed custom tent structures like that. It happens all the time.
So, so let's just say we built the pavilion, okay, the gathering place, and we put railing around it that connect to the steps coming out, the railing?
Yes, sir.
And put the, the tables similar with the umbrellas like we have at the Old Road, I mean, the O'Neil Park?
Yes, sir.
As a gathering with those, where people can gather around, like, the, the picnic tables, whatever it's called?
Sure.
Would, would we, would that structure hold those tables?
The terrace structure itself?
Yeah, it's.
Oh, absolutely. So, the terrace can be built as, as the plans are designed, just that, that's all within my purview. My, my big concern is that juncture point between the terrace and, and any perimeter structure that would go upon that terrace.
I understand, that's what, I mean, we gotta stay with that rule if they get big.
Yes, sir.
If we're not gonna build a big terrace, if we're not gonna build hypothetically the wood structure that you presented earlier, if we do nothing to, like that, does it require those corner sections you're talking about, the?
No, certainly not. Do it not.
Okay.
No.
All right.
And picnic tables with umbrellas, I mean, that absolutely all day long. You know, that'll, that'll be a solid terrace out there. Just again, my concern bringing to the council tonight is, we, I don't feel confident in the connection of the permanent covering to that terrace the way it is now.
I understand that.
Yes, sir.
Legal side of it. We certainly don't want anybody hurt.
Absolutely not.
Nathan, when we talked about that original terrace, and we decided not to do the covering?
Yes, sir.
We were talking about putting the studs out of the concrete to attach the poles for the terrace. We decided to do it, correct?
So, what, yeah, what we had, had decided, like, was, in the, in footing plan of the wall that holds that terrace, I've made allowance with an additional twelve-by-twelve concrete pier to hold a timber structure on top of it. So, that footing is adequate. It's the connection of the timber structure to that concrete.
To the footing.
That's not, that's not figured out, because we don't know what the timber structure is, right? I'm, I'm allowing for a six-to-six post. It may need to be an eight-by-eight post. It is, it hasn't been designed and structurally thought through. And so, that, that was the big red flag for me to come here and discuss with you.
Mayor, just my personal opinion, I'd like to move forward with the pavilion. And if we do decide to do the canopy, then console the structural engineer on how to move forward with one. And if we can, go ahead and put the, the sleeves in for a tent, if that's possible at this point, if we have enough information even to do that.
Yeah, that would require a conversation with the tent company, with, with spaces and all that kind of stuff. And I feel like that would be probably a quicker turnaround than having the timber structure designed and structurally engineered. The, the concern that I have with moving forward with the terrace, though, Scott, is it's designed for, for one, and if, if the timber structure gets designed and structurally engineered and they say, well, the footings aren't adequate, we don't wanna pour all that, those sorts of concrete in that terrace, all that kind of.
I understand, I understand, but, I mean, it's been, we've been talking about it for a year and a half.
I know we have.
And I don't even know, from what I remember, the complete project cost kinda blew us out of water a little bit with, when it come to the canopy and the whole.
That's what I was talking about, the project cost. Yes, sir.
And we decided to do the step, you know, the step process.
The base process, sure.
And, anyway, I just, I just hate to hold it up, even, even if it's gonna cost us a little bit more time and money, just 'cause we waited this long. But that's, that's just me.
Could we reach out, Nathan, and find out what a common pier would be? And then maybe we build it overkill, and then know that, and then have it written up later?
So, we still have, we have the structural drawings for the metal structure that's supposed to be up there. Robbie Elsie have not built it to that spec. That would be way overdesigned for a timber structure. It would be way overdesigned. But when we decided not to do the metal, that, we just, we put that away just because we're not gonna go.
If they went back to do something like that, that totally throw off their forms that they've got there?
It would, yeah, it would throw off the framing, but I think the footing, they might be able to add, 'cause the, the piers on that metal structure have a six-by-six foundation underneath it, and I've got the corners are designed at five-six square.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if it'd be worth putting the additional six inches around it, but the reinforcing on that pier is, is way more than what I've got shown on, on the plans right now for the metal structure.
Yeah. If they could do something like that, and already had it in place, you'd have, I mean, if that was feasible.
Yeah.
And they could do it, and it would already be there in the event, and we would have extra too.
I, I certainly agree with that, but I think the, the concern that I have is, whatever structural connection ties that, whatever structure it is to the concrete, has to go in when they pour this. Otherwise, you're retrofitting and trying to drill and everything, and it's just gonna be an absolute disaster. And, you know, by them saying, well, the eleven blocks got this six-by-six deck thing, and it's just not designed to.
It ain't what you, it's good for the, they do.
Right.
It's not good for second story or your height.
Right. You know, if they come to me with something that I thought was, was structurally sound, I'd be a lot more comfortable perhaps moving forward with it, but, but to say that's what we're looking at and to go read that it's not meant for that, I just, I can't let them go forward with it.
So, are you recommending that we have an engineer look at this?
If you, if we wanna do the structure?
If you wanna permanent covering, then yes, I think it needs to be structurally engineered so that the loads and the tension and all the different stresses are computed and allowed to work in the structural connection to the concrete footing.
Sure. But the problem is, we need a final design on the canopy too before we have the structural engineer tell us what we need to support it. We don't even know what the, I mean, we know what concepts we like.
Yeah.
Work with those, but we didn't have, we don't have a final design on that at this point either, right, Nathan?
I think what Brad was saying was, if we get with an engineering group and we say, this is what size this is gonna be, what is your typical standard size all thread in your structural design that you need to stick out of here to bolt a structure to? Just like these, just like these lights out here at the vault building, they're bolted to a pillar, just like all the lights coming through Main Street here. And it's got all thread up, and then they put the sleeve on, put the nuts on.
Yeah.
Drew, could you get in touch with Lane Group and just see what kinda timing that would be for them to look at that? I'm not a fan of really stopping construction, but I wouldn't expect them, I thought we had that worked out.
I think we already had a contact with the structural engineer that we approved the rates, an hourly rate that was consulted with Nathan, because I don't think Lane Group does that kinda, you know, does specifically that kinda, that kinda work.
Is your contact, can he provide what you need, that you worked with, the engineer?
On the first set of plans?
The guy we've been paying, who we take?
The structural, the original structural engineer, Nathan.
Yes, the guy, the guy from Grundygood, and there's some other structural engineers, if you wanted proposals on it, I mean.
Well, we already have a relationship with, with this gentleman.
Okay.
You trust him?
Yeah.
Well, so.
But we have to have a final design, I think, though, Mayor, that's, that we all agree on, or you could be wasting your time with the structural engineer until you have how high, how big, how much timber you're using, all that's gonna change of what, I mean, unless, maybe just do an overkill.
Well, I think too, Scott, at that point, is it still the council's desire to have the town men build this? Because that was the reason we went away from the metal structure altogether, was we don't have to have custom fabrication, the town crew. It's a picnic pavilion, they can, they can build this. If that's still the case, then how it gets designed will be critical, knowing that that's the work group that's gonna put it together versus a specific timber frame contractor, you know, that would have to come in and.
Where, where are, yeah, where are we on that follow-up now? We're still doing tent?
Well, does that question come before, are we doing a canopy or not? Does that need to come first?
Yeah, I think, I think the fundamental question tonight is this, how do you want that terrace to function? And I know that we've talked about this, but, but it needs to be revisited. How do you want that terrace to function for the theater? And my understanding was it was gonna function as an outdoor vest of fuel because there's no gathering space inside the theater necessarily before an actor show, and it would be flex space for many people in and out. So, if that's the case, then do you want that cover, do you wanna just let folks, you know, deal with the chance of rain, that they walk out of the theater and it might rain, or they're waiting to go in and it might rain?
Put tables and umbrellas, can't put tables and umbrellas.
Well, you don't wanna take up too much of your concrete space, if you've got two hundred people pouring out of the theater, you've gotta have.
Pouring that tables in what?
Straight concrete space. Not necessarily, you don't wanna do too many tables.
Well, I understand, well, can we put some kinda seating out there, like?
Ideally, there was gonna be bench seating around the perimeter at, at certain locations.
Certainly.
So, if we did, so if we did a tent, then, do we have to do this engineering study? Is that required?
I wouldn't think so. I would think a tent, because knowing how our tent goes up and we have the tent above ten pounds.
That's what I'm saying, I hear.
You know, it, it's all very mobile. I think what you'd end up with, and I've seen this before in, in public parks, is you'd have a metal sleeve that those tent posts would slide down in, and they'd lock in place. And then you would have the structure draped up over everything on the terrace. But it would have to be designed that way. That's what I'm saying, it had to be a custom design by a tent manufacturer to do that.
Yeah.
But I think that would be a, the structural piece.
You're still gonna have to pay them to engineer your anchor points.
Yeah, well, that would be, that'd probably be included in the, in the cost of the tent, most likely, but still, yeah. And two, I think the, the town needs to consider, you know, it is gonna function as the terrace, outdoor gathering space first and foremost, but how many days a year will it need to be functioning that way versus just a civic public park area that folks can use? And is that worth the days per year that it would be used for the theater? Is that worth the additional expense and time and effort to get a full-blown covering design engineer installed on there versus not? And that's.
You're talking, that's a timber covering?
What's that now?
Are you talking about the timber covering or any type of covering?
Any type of covering. And that, that's just food for thought. That's just.
I think we all agree, I think we all agree we wanted to cover eventually, just due to the fact of it being an overflow for the theater, but not even just the theater. I mean, you've got parades, in downtown events, I mean, it's just a, it's a place for people to go and gather.
Absolutely.
So, I think we all agreed at the time that we would wanna cover eventually, we just wanted to phase it. Myself, I'm, I mean, I'm willing, what was the engineering group out of Buchanan County?
It's Allsboro Design.
Okay. I mean, I'm willing for them to come look at this and look at the structure and say, here's what you could put on this structure, and here's how we'll engineer it, that way you could eventually do this. That way, if we need to overkill it a little bit, at least we'll know, you know, how thick those concrete pillars need to be, how deep they need to be, the size of the rebar needs to be in them, the all thread that's sticking out of them. And at that point, we'll have those specs and plans, and then when it's time to cover it, we can say, this is how this was engineered and built.
Exactly.
We need to fix it, we need you all to design a cover, not you, whoever, to design a structural sound covering that fits on this plant. That's my opinion.
I, I, that totally makes a lot of sense. The, the only drawback to that is the structural engineer's gonna say, okay, what's your covering? That's the first question they're gonna ask. And if we don't know what size timber members they are, whether it's a vaulted ceiling or just gables, all that stuff comes into huge play when you're, when you're figuring those stress loads. And so, I think if, if you want the covering and you still wanna phase it, which is perfectly fine.
We still didn't have the design.
It's gonna have to be designed now so that the structural component that connects it to the, the foundation can be right. And then, that gets put in, and you say, okay, we're gonna build this two years down the road, and we got the plans for it. This is how it's gonna be built. There's no question about it.
How, how long is that slowest then? Can your guy get over here within a few days?
I don't know, I'll have to, I'll have to check with him and see.
It, it, it would be us getting with Nathan first, is my understanding. For the kind of, Scott, you know, deciding on a covering or at least enough permanent concept that the, any structural engineer would be able to do his job, is that accurate?
I don't know that we need to revisit that, because the last mock-up that I did for that covering in the last model, if everybody still liked that, the timber frame with the, with the hip roof on it, then that'd be enough to go to James and say, okay, look, here, here's what we're after. You tell us what it's gonna take to design this and structural engineer to where it fits on here. That way, we're not totally at, at ground zero, starting with the design on this.
Yeah, 'cause I thought we'd been, I thought we'd been down this road.
Well, well, we've been down the road enough to say, we want that timber structure to sort of look like that. And that was about the last, you know, we had that, you know, we'll revisit it down the road. And we just need to revisit it sooner than later.
It's council's pleasure.
Timeframe, what do you recommend here? You give the recommendation. I think you know where we're at. Not, not timeframe of completion, timeframe on, on.
Getting it figured out.
You're getting that structure back in front of us, let's look at it again, 'cause I got some drawings.
Yeah.
And then the timeframe on the engineer coming to look at what they're doing, that way we're not holding them up. I mean.
It's, it's gonna be a minimum, probably a minimum, logic, of two weeks to be safe. It could be longer, but again, I, I don't know, but I'm hoping that when I call him tonight after I leave here, that he's gonna be able to squeeze some time in to address it sooner. But I just, without talking to him, I can't make a permanent. But I just, without talking to him, I can't make a permanent.
Are you better off second, Mayor?
Two weeks from the night. That's all we can ask, I'm, I'm just not.
That would be a great point to shoot for.
Myself personally, I'm not willing to rush this, just for a, just for an opening when we've been three years doing what we're doing.
And, and guys, I would, I mean, there's no, if it's, and I'm just not involved, don't get down to this, but if it's $5,000, that's a whole lot better right now than no job loss.
We love it, yeah.
I mean, I just.
Or backing up and drilling $100,000 for the peers whenever we do that.
If you rip all that out there, Robbie and I'll see him quit.
So at the very minimum, moving forward, we're setting then, so is that, you understand? Is that what you're saying, Nathan?
At least, at least on the terrace.
Can we do the stents?
Yeah, they absolutely started it, that's in the parking lot, I guess those first set steps up and into the basement, access, absolutely.
So we can do that without him with that mess about?
Right. Yes, sir.
Do we need to know how we feel and what structure? I kinda thought we'd already decided to do the timber.
I think we've agreed on that.
My understanding was the last model mock-up that I showed, the timber frame, the hip roof and the cupola on top, that that was sort of the direction we wanted to go. And if that's the case, then that's when I can send to James and say, this is what the council prefers, help us make this happen ASAP.
Drew, can you get with Nathan and send out those renderings again and also the cost estimates that, for the project? Just, just the information, Nathan?
Yeah, I was trying to.
Let Drew send that back out. Nathan, I do have a question, Mayor. I feel like we need to have access on the level, kind of where the road is now, up to the back, up to the green room. Like, you know, if you was gonna back a van up there, it's kind of an old road up there anyway, does that need to be paved up through there?
The alleyway?
The alleyway, yes.
It certainly could be.
Because that's gonna be utilized for equipment loading and unloading.
Loading, pretty narrow, ain't it? It's pretty narrow, ain't it, like, damn foot.
Yeah, I mean, it's an alleyway, I think it's 14 though, but, but still, I mean.
You can get your.
It would just be a road, a single lane, minimum road is what it would be, but anyway, I just felt. We need to prep that as well, Mayor.
Yeah, we need, 'cause we backed in, I noticed, we backed in the roll-off in there today, big one. So, there's room for like a van, and those vans that come in and unload their equipment, that was big enough for that. Are you, did you say you're gonna email this to everybody?
I can email, that's just, that was the last one.
Yeah.
I should try it, Nathan.
Living a train station.
I believe that's the one.
Yes, sir, that's it.
At least the last, that's the last thing.
The latest and greatest.
That's long-term.
I say go pick that table up.
You just gotta have the concrete space, all the people. Concrete space.
We'll have the same space.
Well, it is, you know, I'd be seeing how we treat this.
So, do you have enough information to move forward now?
I do, yes, sir.
Are y'all good for him to do what we need to do at this point?
How close are we to paving the parking lot down there?
It's the last thing, I understand.
You don't wanna do that until you're not in there with heavy trucks.
It's the last thing.
But it, it's laid out by the. And Mayor, what I'd like to do before we just sort of get out of the hall, I'd like to get James and his proposal on the, the theme for doing that. I, I don't wanna get us in a spot where it's, figuring just not funding it, that's just one of my concerns.
Did we not approve that, did we not approve the hourly rate from the gentleman?
I thought we did already, 'cause he's been, he's the one doing the workforce up there. We approved the hourly rate.
That may have changed, his rate may have changed, but we approved it. But his speech, his speech structure, if I recall.
Is that what you want to update?
I just, I just always ask any consultant, not getting much of their cost.
Look, how many you want to contact him?
That'll, that'll extend it out, that'll weigh in proposals, see if you can even get pretty.
Well, Kevin Taylor, help us out here, we already have this gentleman that we've worked with before. We, we paid an hour, we, we came to an agreement on an hourly rate.
It's professional services.
So can Nathan just update? He's the one to update the service, gonna get some information from that gentleman, is that what you want?
I just, I would just like for him to tell us, it's gonna take me 1,500, $2,000, $3,500 to do this. As a, as a guidepost so we know and it's not just open into.
Right.
Yeah, it's professional services.
Alright, so he can, we can let him negotiate that for us. Am I good with that?
Is that something maybe we can get by Friday for his town manager report?
I'll do my best, I'll do my best.
Everybody good with this?
Just CNN's.
Moving forward?
I'm watching that one, you have it.
Nathan, we really appreciate you, and I think, Drew, you know where we're headed moving forward right now as far as Robbie and them out there?
Yes, sir.
We're moving, we're moving the work.
Moving down.
Okay, gotcha.
Mayor, thank you, Council, thank you for, for being attentive, I hate to throw the wrinkle in, but I think it's better than a lot of them, so.
You do it, you do it nicely.
One more question for Nathan.
Yes, sir.
On the alleyway, if we do an alleyway there, can you look at that and see if we leave a strip of? Where the alleyway needs to be, do we leave a strip of grass in between the wall and the, and the pavement or not?
I wouldn't leave grass, if anything, I would leave gravel, just, just gravel, in that way, that, that asphalt can drain. And even though it's drainage behind the wall, there's, there's adequate underground, what's that gonna handle that? It is a consideration to pay if you're gonna, you're gonna hydrostatically load that wall. But I think if it's gravel and it's all 57s in there behind it, which it is, it should drain out and not be an issue. But I wouldn't put grass in there to make a sign there.
I figured you'd wanna put boxwoods in there.
We'll save it later, something else. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Kelly?
Good evening, thank you for this little bit of time. I came actually to go ahead and ask you to, um, hope that you can honor our request for the library budget. Uh, I think the county is also having a budget hearing that same evening, so I can't be at two places at one time, so I'm here now, so. Please continue to give us money, we'd love for you to give us more money. We are starting to see a little bit more traffic, we're, we're still climbing back up from COVID. We now have three different preschool programs a week at each library. On Monday, we have mini music where they just sing and dance and move. And then Wednesday and Friday, we do traditional story time with stories and activity, you know, craft or anything different. For our little kids, and we got our summer reading program planned, and it's gonna be fun, and y'all should come visit.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, is that all on the progress list?
Randy Burks, Marv.
Thank y'all for praying and doing the pledge, and doing the pledge, they get on the school board over after they drop the prayer.
Forgot what?
School board dropped the prayer, now Sean goes up and just says one at the beginning, but they dropped it out of their agenda. Said that the.
ACLU?
Yeah, from way off from here, I don't care about way off from here, we're Russell County. But I just appreciate y'all for doing that, I'll from way off, y'all dropped it, so. Don't have no drag wings, leave you go. Stories to the kids.
Alright, let's see, in our agenda packet, we have the, uh, the resolution from the DOD. Drew, you wanna explain what that basically is?
Yeah, basically this was when we applied for the funding for, um, the pedestrian crossing signs. I'm pretty sure we're gonna get the money for that, but to get that, it's a anytime risk over a local VOD ministers. I guess the town, you guys signed one back in 2018, and it has to be updated, uh, can't be any older than four years. Basically saying that, uh, we received funds for this, we'll keep up the maintenance and take care of all the funds after that. Also, talks about local match and, but there's no match for this one, but just to update it for the next four years.
For maintenance of our streets.
Well, any, any, yeah, any funding, yeah, that will maintain, we, we get funded for those signs, they're, y'all take care of them.
Okay. Need a motion to approve that resolution?
I'm gonna give it out.
Second.
That's free money, you gotta have, what do you have? In further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
It has to be a real call.
Resolution for blanket project funding commitment and.
Oh, second answer. Okay, Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Laura Fields?
Yes.
Scott Gimmer?
Yes.
Liza Leonard?
Yes, sir.
Brad Lambert?
Yes.
Leonard Kigby?
Yes.
There we go, get all those, Miss Thane?
Sure, are you getting a friend in there?
Okay, Drew, is there anything, uh, moving to the Adams, the minister brother, are we ready for Cedar Fest?
Yes, sir.
Do, do we have the railing that there, from, that we borrowed before?
He was, uh, he was in contact with him, trying to get out through the device, said he made this. We also have hours that we got versus the air barricades.
We'll be okay, okay. And you've got a plan there, I'm sure we're working with Billy and all the guys.
He's been recruiting guys that, uh, it's one thing I brought up that we talked about, I think we're gonna wait, uh, I did have someone reach out that's willing to, uh, put a proposal in, subcontract. The vents, trash pickup and trash at the vents, but I haven't seen anything back from him yet, so.
Okay. Is there anything else in the council regarding, you need to know from Drew regarding Cedar Fest?
Where are they, Ted Biggs? Ninth and 10th?
Do they not get their brochure? Starts the weekend. Well, the first one's actually the Gus' performance, the weekend, course, it's. Had to get up and sit, which is the third, I believe. Okay, alright. So, I got a call from Brandon Blevins, I guess. Drew, is that the Soul Conservation Group at the Government Center? If you remember, a few years ago, we talked, the property at the Government Center, the wooded area between the Government Center and CGI and North Cliff up there. We had discussions about trails, et cetera, et cetera, six, eight years ago. Anyway, they approached us and they're, they're now interested in soliciting, they're wanting, actually, they asked permission to move forward with coming up with a plan, a design, and funding to do that project. So that's what I know right now.
Are they looking to help us get grants to fund?
They're, yeah, they're wanting to do it. So, I mean, that's, it's a pretty extensive deal, they've already gone in and tagged some of the trees and the property and plants that are, that are safe and do not need to be destroyed, so to speak.
Did, did we share our information that we already had, uh, drawn up for that project, honey?
I told them that we discussed, that's right, I said, we've had discussions, but I mean, I'm just sharing with you, I have, I've had one meeting with them.
So they're gonna do it sometime?
Till it gets that grant match.
Yeah, that's what I, that, that's what I was talking about.
But yeah, I'm good.
I might at least move forward and see how far we can get with it. Because actually, they know more about what we need to do out there to protect that property than I do ever know.
Now, wasn't the holdback on that, where they had to build two bridges across the, where the, back when y'all discussed that years back?
Well, they're now actually, they're not even wanting to do the bridges. It actually fits into the sidewalk project, technically that we've been talking about on 10 dollars drive down to the cove. Which, and that's something we talked about. Go around it, yeah.
Connecting back to Veterans Park, then, correct?
Correct, yeah, down in front of the state, uh, coming from the east end of the Government Center along the creek bed.
Do you have a favor of getting that built?
The, uh, I don't know this lady's name, the Russell County Tourism Director, is it that? What's her name?
Shala.
Shala, little? Anyway, her, she's the county tourism director. And this is for our information if we're out in the back. They're proposing out at the Russell Place, the old garment factory, the park a lot across the, uh, she's entered into an agreement to basically have a food, a food truck park there on certain dates. The only thing, all they have to do is pay our fees, me in town, they can do anything else. That, that's something they're wanting to try tourism-wise to have in town, uh, what's called food truck park in that park lot out there.
That'd be great because I saw when, uh, down at the hospital, nobody knows about it, but if you get it somewhere like that.
Yeah, that would be.
People would know that they'll be there.
Yep. Okay. And I think I've covered all the things I mentioned. Okay, Drew?
Sir.
You're up, brother.
Good evening. Got a few things on my manager board, the first one is, uh, to catch back up, we left off for the turf at the playgrounds. Uh, has to get some information on the budget, I grabbed the, uh, year-to-date budget from Southern Software, which is, uh, in your information packet. Basically, the best way to read that, you look at the budget in orange, highlighted in orange at the top is what we're budgeting for on tired apartment. Yellow is what we spent year-to-date, uh, and then the ones to the left that's kinda highlighted, that's just each category, what it was spent on. Looks like we budgeted $377,800 and had spent $206,581. It does not include the $4,000 that was on the fence for the basketball court. So it gives a, minus that, the variance on that's $161,653, so it'd be $955,000 variance. The total for both parks, town and JSE for the turf that we looked at last month, was $101,183.96. I know we're gonna look to see where we're at with our budget before anybody move forward with it or try to break it down into two different budgets.
Does it do both parks?
About the $101, $183 in those both parks, yeah. Broken down, the town was forty-two, seven ninety-eight, oh six, and Jazz East was fifty-eight, uh, three eighty-five, ninety.
The budget, actually, we did more in the budget.
We actually, yeah, we, when we did the budget last year, we planned on salary for the theater and wages for the theater and all that in that. I think that's the, one of the biggest reasons.
You got it.
Quietly over on that.
Okay.
Drew, do we have an area on what will actually be covered by that?
Uh, I think Shane has one, uh, it's pretty good. Out here is everything that's in the mulch right now, plus the swings to the right, and it's all one section. Jazz East, really, it's all the playground that's with their own mulch right now, um, and all the swings that are available, the whole section, it's not broken up into, it's not corner gated, it's the entire section.
So, tell me about the area below the shelter there next to the creek at East Street Park. Rugged mulch is, that rugged mulch, that'll all be one big area. Then the swings and the other will be an area, not just a piece, it won't do just a swing and then a piece over here.
No, I think there's, down at the bottom of Jazz East, it's just two sections, all the swings and all the playground area.
Can you have Shane forward that to us so we, we know exactly?
Yeah, I'll double check, I could have had it from Rick, I don't know if by the time I was getting all different places.
We did take multiple quotes and this was the cheapest alternative, our guys doing some of the great work, correct?
Yeah, all the quotes included our guys doing the great work, so it was just, yeah, bounced out, so.
Very good.
I'd like to move forward, Mayor, if you know anything about it.
Yes, sir. Is there a motion?
Who's the, uh?
The last quote? Pinehurst Professionals. I'd like to move forward with Pinehurst Professionals completing the turf project of the playgrounds at the town parks.
Mayor, in my motion also, I'd like to allow Drew to, there was one section, it was a problem section, the swing sets, it's not included in the quote. If he can find a solution and get that last swing set, I'd like to approve that as well in the motion, if that's okay to say.
That was the one that was kind of steep. So I still talk a little bit, uh, Roger.
New shelter, let you run.
It's above the new shelter.
Yeah, okay.
Roger thinks, you know, he'll do it a little bit.
Okay. Well, she's good, I'm, we're good.
Chair of Parks meets you. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those, same side? Okay. Alright. Continue on.
I, 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 I can see it's been a hundred and one thousand dollars on turf.
Next, Mr. Drew.
The, uh, next thing on there is scheduling some committee meetings. Uh, I know we've got the finance committee, uh, twenty seconds, you have it already. I met with, uh, it's Deanna and Bee, she still would like to discuss the Tree City USA. So I'd like to get with Kevin whenever you're available and see, look at admin's ordinance and go through that and see exactly what all that entails and where the council sets on that. First thing you gotta do is, if you wanna move forward with it all, is create your own ordinance. And you've got different sides and different views and different members, something going on, you don't see any of that, figure out which way I'm gonna move forward.
Good plan.
If we move.
If we move forward, correct. So, that was Parks and Rec meeting, the reason for that, uh, was for that one and also for water and wastewater. One went to the conference and run-up. There's a EPA, it's the ones headed up. But there's a new play of possible rule coming down the line where you have to inventory basically every water line in town. And it's not a hundred percent sure on how all of it's gonna work yet, but a lot of people are thinking it's gonna even include, uh, people's houses, inventory in those houses. And that is not something we want to do, our responsibility starts at the meter. Uh, EPA has other plans, so it's gonna be some contractors that try to do that and it's funding available for it.
What do you mean, you want to do that?
Inventory, yeah, inventorying, uh, the way I heard, the way I understood it from the council or from the conference was, and like I said, doesn't sink in stone, and this is not, this is not coming from the Health Department, me or anything, it's coming from EPA. Basically, what they're looking at is, we have to, as a town, we have to inventory every water line we have.
Our lines.
Our lines, we can do that. They wanna go a step further and inventory residents, residential homes built prior to a certain year and see if they have lead and copper lines, lead lines and copper siding.
Who is, if they want to do that, who they want, who do they want to do that?
The, the responsibility falls on us, so we need to find contractors that are gonna be willing to do it. Basically, where it falls is you offer this to a person from, like I said, it's in the state, early stages of what, how they set it in run-up, uh, Virginia Water Conference. Is you're gonna offer to inventory these people's house. If they deny it, they deny it. Uh, I think they have to deny it another time for you to be clear of if they dig six from lead and copper, you're not, the town's not alive. If they agree to it and they have lead and copper in their homes, they have to replace those at their cost.
But there's funding for them.
There's funding, that's what we have to do is find funding and the contractors.
They can reject three times, on the third time, we ask them to sign a waiver that says, you know, you're on your own if you get poisoned or something.
Okay, you're, hey, trust me, I want nothing to do with this, but this is kinda.
What is the timeframe?
October of two thousand and twenty-four, is the deadline to have done.
Golly, golly.
Are you kidding me? But that's just a proposal, this isn't actually gonna adopt this rule.
I think the rule is gonna be, no matter what the rule is, the deadline's gonna be October twenty-four, latest.
If it's, if it's implemented.
Yep.
Alright, you, I'm not through. Um, my question is this, so, do they have the authority, have they already made this decision?
It's coming, from what I know, it's coming down, they're already preparing, it hasn't went into law yet, I don't believe, but it's gonna happen, they're just finalizing everything that happens.
Do they have to go through the state before it comes to the locality? Does the state, does the legislation, our legislators have any dog in this hunt?
I'm out of EPA. It's serious enough to where everyone in run-up, Virginia Water was telling us to prepare for it.
Sounds like it's coming in.
I'd like to, uh, schedule us a water wastewater meeting and get Chris in here with us.
Yeah, Chris and I have both been on the webinar, that's the frustrating thing about it, is you take two or three different warrants and they tell you to agree.
Mayor, you wanna reach out to the Health Department, have the water guy maybe come.
Yeah.
Have him come to the meeting.
That's a good meeting, and if you can get information on it, Drew, as far as the actual requirements or what they're saying we're gonna have to do. Can you get a copy of Kevin, please?
We have it in Parks and Rec, twenty-second also.
I say, yeah, do all we can to this, we don't have to be, so, so, I mean, the jury don't know, so I would like to.
Well, we're gonna have to, yeah, I mean, might as well. We gotta talk about personnel committee too. Can you give them?
Drew, to jump back to Parks and Rec, what time is it? Do you care to have some of our maintenance guys go back out and recheck all that playground equipment? It's, I mean, it's getting warm and springtime's here and summertime's approaching, just to make sure we don't have any loose equipment, nuts bolts in.
Twenty-second, Mayor.
Get tied up on.
I can, thank you, sir.
Can people, I, could we, could we get together in our committee meetings at four o'clock on the twenty-second? You know, your work schedules are getting, Scott? Can you make?
Could you do three?
Huh?
I was just thinking that we could get the.
I can do three.
I was just thinking we could get the Health Department guy here, they use the.
No, we could do you at first. Be careful, can you make it before Liza?
Yes, sir, no problem, I was already scheduled.
And you're, you said Leonard, you're not gonna do four? Alright, we'll do, uh, let's do the water sewer, I mean, the wastewater at four o'clock. And Drew, try and get your Health Department, and one of the guys here.
It's Water, Parks and Rec, and Finance.
Yes, start at four o'clock.
Personnel, you don't want.
That's Finance, well, I mean, we can do.
Well, the Finance Department.
That's how they say it, we don't have to have Finance before six o'clock. Do it.
Well, unless anybody's got any budgets or something.
Let's do Personnel.
At six o'clock, you've got a reconvene meeting.
I know, that's what I'm saying, but that's favoritizing the budget. So we don't need to have Finance Committee. Is that, is that right? Do you, Scott, do we need to have Finance?
Well, we'll have a reconvene, we need four Finance.
Yeah, you can open up to talk about that right.
That's at six o'clock, that's my point, so we do need to have Personnel Committee meeting. So we'll do the, let's do, uh, Parks and Rec will be after. Water and wastewater. And then Personnel, then we'll get, uh, we'll go to the reconvene meeting. Dan, you better, you better send those notices.
So you wouldn't rather just reconvene at four, put these items on the agenda, so that way we're not tied by time, where you can take action together and still keep it public hearing at six?
Yep, that's just the term reconvene at four instead of six, I guess, that then?
We didn't.
No, that's, that's cleaner for you, Dan.
But we, but we did advertise for six o'clock in the.
We did. It's in the table, yeah, we can't discuss that until six, that's correct.
Twenty-second, four o'clock, correct?
Correct. So may I remember to amend that motion when we get, get ready to leave here, instead of six, it'll be four. Go ahead, Drew.
Next thing I had on there was the contractor bills for the bridge inspection and for payment, both of those expire this year. Uh, bridge inspections expire October twenty-three and, uh, our contract WNL for the payment expires November twenty-three. I've got, uh, Diane, if you have both of the RFPs and the bid proposals and all that, the blank ones out, if you all wanted to use the same ones, go ahead and start advertising for those and get those knocked out before.
It'd kinda good if they did July to June, if everything else, I don't know if it's possible or not.
If, if, I guess it's possible with the same ones, uh, if you wanted to do that, but I think probably wanna try, especially if it's paid and hold on November.
They're due through November.
The costs that we've got the last three years.
What about the bridge, when is it?
October.
How long, when you gonna put out those RFPs then?
Whenever, I, whenever you want to try to do.
September, August, or July, August, is that what you're doing?
Yeah, I'd rather sooner than later, that way we can go ahead and get it off, do it out of the way.
What bridges we got coming up this time?
Everything but the one on seven one. They do all of them, but they're kinda staggered years the way that was.
They didn't even fill all of them for the new bridge, and I hear this, does that still have to be checked again?
Everything, what's one, the one, uh, at the shop, let's talk about, or which one?
I hear the Catholic turf.
That one's inspected, it's on the inspection.
When would put that in either?
Must've been last inspection, everything came back good.
Been five or six years ago.
Everything from last inspection.
They're inspected every other year.
Every one else?
Every bridge is inspected every other year.
There's contracts for three years, so you got to.
Anybody leaving to that for July or March?
What, fix the bridge?
Or inspect it.
I'll take the sub due minutes.
Four.
Issues, begin the sketch.
Oh, being counsel, I just. I'll get an update on, uh, I'll have an update on where we stand exactly in the budget also for that meeting.
Like I said, I just wanna get ahead of those for a little bit too long, to get all the other files. Go out to blank ones, we can just change the dates and send the same ones out if you like, if you want to wait till closer, till when they're running up, that's fine. I think what happened, reading the minutes, we'll go back to the last one, reading the minutes, I think we're dealing both in the same month, but you wanted to put off, there was some, something with the bridge inspection, you put off another month for something, to get it back, that's why they're off.
What about the, when is the street marketing contract due?
It's up July next year, twenty-four.
So it's up July?
And also, it does state, um, have the link on here somewhere. This one is for the payment, uh, this did as good as binding from November ninth, twenty-twenty to November ninth, twenty-twenty-three, and less extended, so.
Less extended.
They don't want to extend it at that price.
Oh, yeah, that's, when we got that contract, that was when the oil was down big time on the barrel.
Yeah, but I think they still do, I think in that contract, there's still an asphalt adjustment.
They do that in asphalt.
They're basically in digs.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right.
I mean, is it worth the contact to see?
Maybe all trash.
And ask if they want to extend it and give us the price.
And a couple of other things I added to my report, uh, Beverly and I met, it was, uh, this Friday, the lady from Versa called with a new proposal for the insurance. It's basically the exact same that we had last year, ended up, we saved about ten thousand dollars on it because the payroll shrunk a little bit, uh, for workers comp and that sort of thing, but the theaters want to get back up. So it's still gonna happen for about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the personal proposal. If you all are good, it's in, all that is already in, and into the budget with the boiler insurance, solid insurance and all that.
So our employee insurance and everything, everything's good?
Everything's good, everything's new, uh, well, upon your approval, I can renew everything.
Listen, before we get away from that, listen, Mr. Saddle, let. You might wanna make a motion to approve personal insurance for employees in the town. Did no increase, is that true?
No increase, I might have known.
So a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
So, this is the. What'd you say, first of the insurance or the minute?
First, so they got a workers comp, our auto insurance, our OSHA compliance, all their classes that we do, um, the boiler insurance that you see on the budget for the buildings, all the, uh, bill, insurance on all the buildings.
Okay.
And so also, we'll get Andy Sheldon to come, do our playgrounds and all that, so that's true. I've got it, like I said, just got a, I got a copy of the proposal, if anybody wanna look at it.
One more time, no increase.
No increase.
Okay, alright. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side? And what, what did, just as a side, our employee insurance wasn't increased this year, was it?
No.
So that was the.
Yeah, I think we found that one out, uh, first year, so I'm gonna give it, yeah.
Is that the one they said the holder breath for next year?
For anthem.
Yes.
Probably.
Okay, we'll take it a year at a time. Alright, go ahead.
And then, I just, one thing I thought of when we were sitting there actually, I needed to add an ass, like getting with Doris, she's getting some templates for the banner for Vet Fest. I figured it was a no-brainer, but I just wanted to make sure everybody was good with it, not putting a date on that, so it's reusable every year, so, putting a date.
I think it's good, should probably be better for the veterans, it gives, yeah, it gives them flexibility in the planning.
And that's, uh, that's all, that must somebody has any questions, obviously, I put the budget, new budget on the, uh, in front of me, that's got the, what was advertised on the paper as well, for the public here. And, uh, it does say, I think the dates are messed up, I talked to them last year, but it was fixed in the paper, so it's not like that.
Drew, we had, uh, looking at the budget and where we're at on Parks and Rec.
Yes.
We had talked about this before, Mayor, also, and we never really took action. Can we move forward in getting the Old Mill Park painted as well?
Yeah, it's actually on Billy's, uh, community report for the project, I was just meaning to get that painted.
We can do that ourselves, I think.
Same rest name, we're talking about the bid, the actual man, or are we talking about the?
It was the side, it was the, uh.
Paper?
Yeah, the papers.
The brick, yeah.
I'm assuming it'd be kinda like the stuff from the tennis courts, except a different color.
Yeah, it was like that, when they did, they, they laid the concrete and painted and threw some.
Is that like what the crosswalks are?
What it is.
Did it like to come in for the, L D like to come in?
I haven't heard anything on that, I'll check with Shane. Him and Kristoff have been working together on those, I'll check with them.
Drew, and also check for, including Cluesher, believe that's the one, police cars we got down here.
Okay.
It's been down there for a while. See what stats is on it. You know, we talked about that, Dan.
When are they gonna cut?
He wants us to hear through there.
You know, Drew? When are they gonna, how you, how you going on?
Should be hopefully sometime this week. They've been inspected, the fall in between was apparently some information didn't get passed from Mickey to Josh about inspecting them. And they never got inspected on town.
I, I remember that.
So.
They hit, they've been approved, and EPA's the work order now, is that right?
They take on the watch, man.
That's part of it, yeah.
Yeah, it's twelve minutes, twelve covered.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Drew. Jamie?
So the activity report from the police department, um, we had a total of seventy six summonses, written warnings and, uh, actually, or criminal cases this last report. Twenty of those were actual traffic summonses, eleven were written warnings. Uh, we had a total of forty five criminal investigations. Out of those, forty five, thirty eight were actually closed with arrest. Uh, and we have seven still active. For the month, we have a total of arrests of thirty three, which vary between twenty eight misdemeanor arrests and five felony arrests. Uh, we worked a total of nine motor vehicle crashes here in the town. Five of those were reportable crashes, four were non-reportable crashes. We had a total of twenty three assisted motors, four of them kids locked vehicles or boosted vehicles off. We answered a total of six hundred and eleven calls for service. Uh, we had a total of miles of eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixty five miles. Total fuel finished, uh, was seven hundred and seventy eight point one gallons. Some of the, uh, community policing events that the officers took part in, uh, the first one being the Little League parade, um, from France. We had officers do the drug take back, and then they, uh, took back a very large amount of, uh, narcotics to the, uh, drug take back box here, as well as people brought, Walmart. They, there was some in the area of eighty some pounds that were took back to be destroyed to the DEA on that day. We had officers attending the middle school dances, uh, take off tonight, we missed the violence awareness. Uh, we were killed continuing to do the walkthroughs at the, all the games and walkthroughs through the local schools. Had a Wednesday where we were told that, uh, we had applied for an ARPA grant through, uh, BCJS and all those grants had been approved. We're still waiting for the finalization to get that in, so we can, uh, you all know that we get the, uh, final approval on it, but we were told that everything had been approved again.
So you all are being, we are visible rental schools right now.
Yes.
I think Dylan made a, he made a good point, I don't know if you wanna tell.
Y'all beef that up a little bit in the next fourteen days, like, lots of much, you're gonna go to the schools, cause it's summertime, I'm, uh,
We is right.
Different mindsets right now.
Yes, we is right, too. Um, the, uh, the old people in the call volume, we're losing an officer. Where administration's head out a little bit different to the, get favorites on wood shit versus the other shit.
Make yourself as a law if you can.
I'll put a note on it, sir.
Jamie, thank you. Any other questions for Jamie at this time?
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
No, not at this time, Mr. Mayor. Couple things, thank you, sir.
Okay, if I could have, uh, one thing, as far as Scott's, may I make an amendment to your, um, motion? I, looking back at the quote, the turf is actually bought from, the material was from Artificial Turf Supply and Pinehurst Professionals installed. Those two different companies, if you wanna make, uh, give us, make the companies on there.
Just to change that in the motion, is that what you're saying? No difference in the pricing?
No, no, no difference in the prices. We just bought it from one company and installed it, and that's the same company.
Okay, I have a motion, government to close session under section two point two dash three seven one one A. Under legal, uh, is that for updates pending litigation?
Before we did that, Mayor, can I give it up in a little bit? Under old business, or new business or this?
Go ahead.
We were unable to, uh, have much of a festivities for opening day, as y'all remember, because the rain set in the night before, so. We, we did have our parade and put a couple food trucks. So with that, we'd like to have a kind of a going out bash for the season. I'd like to get with Shane and get us a dump tank, a few more food trucks. Um, I think there's gonna be a coaches and board meeting, a coaches and board members, softball game. We'd like to throw in maybe a wiffle ball game for the kids. Um, we'd like to do this before, um, our All-Star season starts, so I've got a few dates. If the council's okay with it, I'll get with Shane and Jan and schedule a date.
All dates are ahead of you, got?
I guess do the third and fourth, that would be, uh, the first Cedar Fist?
The third is Gospel, ninth and tenth is Cedar Fist.
Okay. Uh, the third, fourth, the eleventh, uh, or May twenty eighth.
Well, it won't be down May twenty eighth, huh?
Well, we will be ending, we will be ending regular season right, yeah.
Weekend twenty fifth, maybe?
Yeah.
Now, so those dates are all soon. You know that?
I, I didn't, excuse me, what my boss gave me, so. Uh, if we could do the twenty seventh.
The May would be good. Or the seventeenth of June. That's right, Memorial Day weekend. So where we look, what's the status of Little League on June the seventeenth? Regular season open, or y'all ready?
We'll be an All-Stars.
We will be hosting All-Stars in Little.
On the seventeenth?
Yeah.
So what we need to do is host the full bar and have.
What about the third? The Gospel, it, it started early o'clock.
We'd probably do the third, obviously. I mean, we could do the third.
The ten o'clock?
Yeah.
Let's do that.
I can check our little schedule and confirm it, Drew, but, um, I'd like to check with Shane.
Yeah.
Would it pull me about, pull me up by the end?
They're open.
If we could rent the pool, I thought the splash pad for the kids, we'd also to.
Wait their, uh, wait their vision pool.
The, the, the Little League hasn't, uh, used our budget for the town any this year and hardly any last year also. I would like, if we could, the town, if we, if we weren't able to get the contract for them. Maybe buy the kids pizzas or something like that, sponsor the kids pizzas, or, uh, if we wanted to. Strip town pay for those in place, or eat some, something, anything special we could do.
I think all we ask is you provide receipts.
Yeah. You probably have that, yeah.
Yeah.
You're good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to be.
You can go ahead and draw it down, wherever, before they end the worst of the game. I mean, I know y'all done a lot of work over there.
Why is sure of what's.
Yes.
This year is my.
We have to go on the.
That's not a use, I think, if you got it there, do, learn this.
We're just gonna do something special for the kids, and they put in as much time as we get.
Do you want us to wait to hear back from you on this June third date?
I can let Drew know, probably harder. Don't you, Drew and Shane.
Do you let us know, guys, so we get in our calendar?
What time's the pool open on Saturday? Which we open much earlier that day, Brad. Just whatever we, um, make the better day early Shane on.
I think Saturday's earlier, Sunday I think it'll be.
Yeah, I was talking to Shane.
Yeah, go ahead, I mean, we can schedule, love you to that.
Cause I stay at school.
Yes, around this week. With kids. I'm good. All right.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session. Legal?
Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All those same side?